If we can get everybody to grab their seats and we'll try to get started promptly at six.
Well, it's already 6:02.
Our senior statesman is running a little bit behind schedule here, so. There you go. Okay, Ms. Whitby, let's call roll.
Okay, Ross?
Here, but I'm getting messages that there's no TV.
There's no TV. Obviously, there's none up there either.
It's on Comcast.
Okay, it's on AT&amp;T and Facebook, but not Comcast, okay?
And White?
Here.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
Of course, Miss President, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. You know, I think it's only fitting that his last council meeting ever, he is in charge of saying the prayer and the pledge, so I invite you to rise, Councilmember Witcher, to lead us in the prayer and pledge.
Mayor, I'm gonna get even with you tonight. Good old Baptist prayer.
Okay.
Our Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for celebration of your child's birth. Thank you for our love for one another and for the opportunities that you've given us today, yesterday, and the last couple of years. Thank you for our friends around the city. God bless Jane as she starts her duties with the City Council and bless the City Council as they go their way. In thy name we pray. I'm in.
I'm in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So moved.
Second. On the motion.
To approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Communications, I'm seeing we added some this afternoon. One through nine, anybody want to pull one?
How about, was it eight? Eight?
Eight from the Rear Admiral?
Yes.
That was a really nice letter. Okay, how about a motion to accept one through seven and nine?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Do you want eight read by title or in its entirety?
Could you read that fully, Ms. Whitby?
It's not too long, it's been.
Not too long.
This is dated November 30th, 2018. It says Aloha Greg. Okay, I'm gonna attempt this. Mahalo nua loa. Thank you very much for the amazing tour of the Arkansas Inland Maritime Museum and, of course, Razorback and Hoga. That was my first visit to the museum and I'm looking forward to return to the riverbanks of North Little Rock. I'm excited to spend more time enjoying all of the collection you have on display. Hard to believe you're displaying only a small part of the overall collection. It is truly an amazing and diverse array of history. Rivaling maritime museums I've visited all over the world. I've also toured a lot of historic ships over the course of my career, but none beat the material condition of the Razorback. I think it's fantastic you can still actually operate so much of the submarine, particularly an engine. I know Hoga will get there, too. Thanks again and thanks for your service and thanks for being such a part of the naval history and heritage. Sincerely, BP Fort, Rear Admiral, U.S. Navy. And this letter was addressed to Greg Zoner at the Arkansas Inland Maritime Museum.
Mayor, I'm not sure if the other part of the council knows, but he's commander of the Pacific Fleet, is that right? And stationed out of Hawaii. And he said anytime anybody from North Little Rock comes, he'd be happy to give them a personal tour. So I moved to accept.
About a second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, we've got quite a long consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull any of those? We have some of these commissioners here tonight and I'll address that after we pass the legislation. Anybody want to pull?
Our 244.
Our 18, 247 and 248.
246, so he's not here, though.
I'm gonna introduce them later.
Are you?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you still want to pull?
Do you want them?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right, what did you say, Ms. Ross?
247 and 248.
So Height does not want 244 pulled.
No, we're gonna bring them all up here.
And then I saw an email that Mrs. Rahm did not want to be reappointed. Did you want to?
We're gonna withdraw that.
Okay.
18, 230 now to be withdrawn. Okay, how about a motion to accept all others on the consent agenda except 239 and 247 and 8?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Clerk Whitby, do your stuff. We've got four of these commissioners here tonight to be sworn in. We want all these reappointments. We certainly want to say thank you for your past service and your future service. I know Steve's here, Mike Abel's here.
Robert Barnes?
Yeah, Robert's here and Beth White is here. So if y'all all come up here and so we can swear you in, Ms. Whitby will swear you all in. And I want to say again, thank you for what you do, Steve. You know, I would, you know, if we paid you guys, Steve, you and Mike, we would give you hazardous duty pay for having to serve with Tom Brown, but we appreciate you putting up with Tom as you do your business. So thank you very much, all of you. Robert, thank you. And same goes to all those others that we didn't recognize tonight. Thank you for your service. Okay, let's go to 247.
247. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of North Little Rock with the Audubon, Arkansas for the painting of six storm drains for the Drain Smart Environmental Educational Program.
Move to accept and file, and I have a question.
Second. Did you second, Beth?
Yes, second.
Okay, we have, all right, question?
Okay.
You need to accept in a file, you need to move to.
I'll move to adopt.
Thank you for catching that.
Second.
Second, okay.
Now, question. On this, there are six drains, so are those gonna be placed around the city or have we got a plan for where these will be placed?
They're gonna present me with a plan. I told them we had to have at least one in every ward and we had to see drafts of what they're gonna look like.
Good, okay.
Because if they do one that we don't bless, or I don't bless, we're gonna pay it over. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Somebody saw one of these over in Little Rock and was really complimentary about it, said it was a pretty cool deal, so maybe it'll work, hope so. Okay, 248.
248, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, any documents relating to the investment of funds with Arvest Wealth Management.
Motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Comments?
I was just curious, I mean, do we go out for this? Let Scott kind of explain what this is, I guess.
Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. The Investment Committee did release RFP and we had responses from three people. Arvest Wealth Management was actually a new respondent. We already have funds invested with Cruz and Raymond James and so the Investment Committee decided to work with Arvest to invest electric department funds. And their auditors wanted this legislation, although the mayor and city clerk signed all of our banking documents, Arvest requested this legislation so that their auditors had something on file showing that you all understand and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign documents for this purpose.
I was just curious, I haven't seen this before.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
New business, R 18, 250, Mayor Smith.
Yeah, before we get into that, we do have one person signed up to talk about new business and that is Robert Fury to talk about R 18, 254. I'm gonna hold that, Robert, if it matters. I'm not calling that legislation tonight.
Robert Fury, 7205 Pontiac Drive, Ward 4. I added my name to the list after I learned that you were gonna hold it. Still, a question, I'm curious about the status of the preliminary design, preliminary plans, and who developed those plans or design?
This is comments only. Thank you. Okay, I have no others. How about, let's go to 18, 250.
249. We need to do R 18, 249.
I thought that was part of the consent agenda.
I wasn't, I'm sorry.
It is.
I apologize.
Okay. New business, 18, 250.
Okay. 250, a resolution determining and establishing the North Little Rock Electric Department's 2019 avoided cost of solar power.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Comments?
Could, I see Jill Ponder and Jason Carter both here, just kind of explain what avoided cost is.
Good luck in getting that in five minutes.
I said it was gonna be a long one.
Really, avoided cost is the cost that we avoid when we buy power from our customers. Those are departmental costs that are avoided by someone who generates power and puts it on our system. So at that point, we should not care where we get the power from, whether we're getting it from our customers or from another source, and we try to be fair by our customers.
Yeah, we have very few solar customers right now. You know, L'Oreal's one, VA's one, you know, but there's gonna be more in the future. So we had to go ahead and establish, you know, how we were going to price the power that we sell and how we're gonna establish what we're going to pay for the power they're bleeding back on us.
This should be a number that gets evaluated annually.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R 18, 251, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing and ratifying the submission of a petition for review and motion for stay of the FCC's recent small cell order.
Some motion and we'll get another quickie from Jason on what this is. Motion?
Adoption.
Steve, in second. Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, Ron, second.
As you're aware, the, you know, we adopted a small cell ordinance last summer, worked in cooperation with Conway Corporation, AT&amp;T, some stakeholders out there to get a good ordinance in place. The FCC since adopted a small cell order that some of which contravenes our ordinance. It has caused great consternation all over the country. The National League of Cities is involved, American Public Power Association's involved, U.S. Conference of Mayors is involved. What this resolution is ratifying is our own action in the Eighth Circuit. Many of the cases that were filed did not pursue a stay of the order. So the order from the FCC that would, it's scheduled to become effective January 14th and we asked the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals to stop that, stop the order from being enforced until we can get a judicial ruling on it. It's a steep hill to climb, it's a tough burden, but we're engaging in the case with Missouri Public Utilities Alliance, the collection of cities north of the border from us, and we're gonna see if we can't get a stay put in place. So that's what this resolution pertains to.
Mayor? Yes. That was great. Can you briefly tell us some of those conflicts?
Yes. So who can apply for a permit? We say you have to be an FCC licensed entity. The FCC says anyone can apply to attach things to our poles. We think that's unreasonable. We control how many permits can be, or the flow of permits through the process. Someone submits an application, it gets approved, they may submit another one. Under the FCC's rules, they can submit however many they want to, whenever they want to. Our application fees are several times higher than what the FCC calls safe harbor for an application fee. We don't think that realistically we can process an application for the fee that the FCC is deeming reasonable. They want a maximum height of 35 feet and they're saying a presumed valid size of these devices, including the equipment that goes with the device, is about the size of a refrigerator. It's 28 cubic feet. So we don't think that that protects cities and just like cities that have filed in the First Circuit, in the Tenth Circuit, in the Ninth Circuit, and in the D.C. Circuit, we have also filed in the Eighth.
We're leading that charge with the, you know, the City of North Little Rock is leading that charge, literally, with the Missouri Public Power.
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R 18, 252, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution amending the 2018 budget for the City of North Little Rock to include additional expenses in certain departmental budgets.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R 18, 253, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the North Little Rock Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development Services.
Move for adoption, I have a comment.
Second.
Comments?
I've been serving in this chair for the last 18 years and I'm proud of the relationship that not only the City Council, the mayor's office, but the Chamber of Commerce has had in those 18 years and it just seems like that every time something comes up, the three of them working together are doing something for the benefit of the city and I think to continue that relationship with them is very valuable, not only to the Chamber of Commerce, but also to all the residents of North Little Rock and I'd like to see a favorable vote from everybody.
Second, what do you say? Thank you very much. Your vote, Ms. White?
Just a question, in the legislation, it stated two positions?
Well, it stated that he would allow us two offices, I think, over there, but we only have, we only need one.
I just wondered what that was, what that meant. Okay.
Just Todd. Ms. Ross?
Okay, this is the $75,000 to the chamber that comes out of the $275,000 that was allotted for the economic development. And they did, they are required to do the quarterly reports, just like Todd Larson was when he was in that position. Now, with Todd being a city employee, is he also required to do those reports on his end also?
No. Monthly?
Todd's required monthly, okay.
Okay.
Okay, and will we see those?
As soon as I get them all before them to everybody.
Okay.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R 18, 254, Mayor Smith.
Hold it, please.
R 18, 255, Councilmember Height?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the low bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Gene Summers Construction for the Levy Trail Phase III project in the amount of $336,084.23 in appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
Second, thank you. Mr. Wilburn can answer this question if I'm wrong, but this extends the trail, Levy Trail, to Kerry, is that correct?
Yes, Kerry, right. Okay, on the motion. Ms. White?
I just have a question, it's not really about this legislation, it's about bids. Something on it, when I was reading it, made me just kind of question. If we get a low bid, but that company has not performed well for us in the past, do we have the opportunity to make a change?
Absolutely. And we've done that in the past. And if they're a little suspect, we watch every move they make, so we've got one starting next week, we're gonna be watching.
I've found myself calling Kenny Stevens repeatedly, you know, around the city and different things you see that aren't safe.
Yeah, I mean, if you see somebody that you think that's not doing a quality, professional job, we want to know about it, but we're watching them so close anymore that that's pretty hard to do.
Amazing.
Yeah. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance is O 18, 95, Mayor Smith.
I'm gonna withdraw that, please.
O 18, 96, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a parking lot in a C-6 zone for property located at the southeast corner of North Olive Street and Sixth Street in the City of North Little Rock for streeting.
How about a motion, get it on the floor.
Move, we waive all readings.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion to waive all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes, move for adoption.
Second.
Let me give a little bit of a what's happened here. This is, all of us know and remember, Loretta Edgar, Star Boltin Screw. This is her company down there and her two nephews own it and run it now. And that lot next door to them, which is right beside that other parking lot, they've been parking cars there for quite some time and not knowing that they needed a business license or anything else. And they just parked cars there when there was an arena event, of course. And so, there was a contractor here from Texas that came in and said, "We've got a bunch of asphalt and some men ready from another job, we'll give you a special price on paving your parking lot." And so, they're a little young and I think they probably jumped a little bit too quick at a bargain. And they did this over the weekend and when they came back on Monday, that the entire parking lot, all the way to the curb, was paved. And because it was undeveloped piece of property, they're soon going to add on, I believe, to their building, so it'll be even more developed in the near future. And it was gonna be pretty expensive to redo, you know, cut the asphalt out and re-put in the sidewalk again. You know, I did tell them that we would probably paint the asphalt to where the sidewalk was supposed to be and I just hated to make them pay the additional cost on something that they, you know, I know that ignorance of law is no excuse, but, so I told them that I would present this to you guys and let y'all make the decision. Questions?
My question is, and I seem to do this quite often, why are we not doing this as a special use as opposed to conditional use? Because once this conditional use is passed, it's from there on out whether they develop or not. It says in there they have intent to, but if we do a special use, we could put two years on this and then they could bring it back to us. I just, and they could sell the property with conditional use in the next person, so I would like to see it as a conditional use.
Got a reason why you did conditional or?
We were requested from planning to do it as a conditional use and the condition is to be able to use it as a parking lot and so that does leave that and it does run with the land. If this passes, then the next ordinance, which seeks multiple waivers, those waivers will only exist as long as it is used as the parking lot and when redevelopment occurs, then those waivers will expire as a matter of law.
But where we are here is, if that property moves on to another individual, we've still got this ugly parking lot. They will never have to update it as long as they say that, you know, to a development. So, and I know a special use is a downgrade because we've done this in the past, so I don't think notification is required. Mr. Spencer's here, I'm sure he could clarify that.
Care, Sean?
That's correct, we wouldn't require.
Okay, all right, how about, that is amendment?
Well, I'd like to make amendment, is a special use with two years on it and so within two years, they do have to come back, but I also, I don't want to, I mean, I don't want to waive the wheel stops, I don't want cars going jumping the curb or anything like that, so I don't know if we want to do that in the next piece of legislation when we're asking for all these waivers that.
Okay, that's all right. Let's do the special uses. Oh, we got a motion to amend in a second, do I have a second?
While you're amending, I made a mistake in Section 1. If we could also, if you would include in your motion to amend, it says now that the conditional use is approved for a car sales lot and that should be parking lot, so I apologize, but if we could also include that in your amendment.
Okay, that definitely, Section 1, remove car lot, I mean, car sales lot and put parking
conditional use is approved for a car sales lot and that should be parking lot. So, I apologize, but if we could also include that in your amendment.
Okay, that definitely, section one, remove car lot, I mean, car sales lot and put parking lot.
You got that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, alright. Mr. Taylor?
Oh, wow. So, somebody came in and, and botched up the parking lot?
Well, they did a pretty good job of laying pavement, they just did too much of it. And they did it all without a permit.
Wow. And, okay, yeah, that's all I needed to know.
I mean, they did, 'cause I wouldn't look at it, I couldn't believe it. But, I mean, they, I mean, the old parking lot, if you look at, I mean, the old sidewalks, when you, they were all broken, just pieces of sidewalks, but they paved over our, the city right away. It was not even a easement, it's a right away.
I mean, what they have there is much better to walk on than what we had.
Alright, it was, it was nasty. That's why two years, I'm okay with it.
So... Wow.
So, Audemars Ross, what happens after two years?
What happens after two years? They would have to come back in here and renew the special use and hopefully at that time, that their addition to their building would be on there and they would change the parking lot to accept customers on that side of the building. And we could redo it at that point in time and add the landscape.
That's fine.
You guys alright with that?
I guess my concern, my concern is that, that, so anybody could come in and do this and say, "Oops, I didn't mean to do this," and come plead to the city council and if once we do this one, then how do we look when we tell the, the next one, "No," and then, "Oops, somebody else does it." Well, so, are we setting the precedence or what? I mean, I know the council can...
And, and the council can waive requirements, they can grant a special use. And, and based on the circumstances of each particular case, there are very few instances that are identical and so, so it can be, most things can be differentiated, but Council Member Taylor, you are correct that, that it certainly can create an impression that one party may have been treated differently than another if something similar comes along and that is, and it's not approved for the next one.
Ms. Ross?
I agree, it's one of those, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission is what this is basically, but they are required to pay the, the drainage in lieu of fee for the increase in the impervious service. So, they do have that, they are gonna, if this passes, they'll be required to have, you know, the wheel stops and no parking in the public right of way there.
Correct. Do we have a second? On the motion.
And, and just for my purposes, this special use is only gonna, with your amendment, be in effect for two years.
Okay, you need to put that on your tickle file, Sean. Alright, the emotion to amend.
So, this, so this is on the motion to amend.
Alright, alright.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01896.
Wait a second, I think we were supposed to call a public hearing on that.
Oh, looks like you were.
Yeah.
Looks like we were.
I mean, we could expunge that vote, but let's wait and see. I'm gonna call a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on this, special use parking lot on C-6? Seeing none, closed public hearing and we'll let that vote stand as is. Um, let's go to the next one.
01897.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Fury.
I'm retired civil engineer, designed a lot of parking lots. What's the pavement structure? Will it hold up an F-350 pickup truck? Is the soil under it of sufficient bearing capacity?
Comments, Robert? Comments, not questions.
That's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Anybody wanna change their vote? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Uh, go to the next one.
01897 Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of sections 12.21, 15.4, 15.6, and 18.2 of the zoning ordinance for a parking lot on certain real property located at the southeast corner of North Olive Street and Sixth Street in the City of North Little Rock first reading.
Moved away the readings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
The move.
In a second, we had over here. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So, we changed that to a special use, the last one, and what this was doing was waiving everything from the one before, but since we have the two years, so what do we need to do here? City attorney, yeah, I'm okay with not doing the, the street trees for two years and the shade trees and the row of shrubs for two years, but after two years, this has to go in. So, what, do we need to put a two-year time limit on this one also if we waive this or did the last piece of legislation waive that? I'm confused.
Just to be safe, um, right now in section two, it says the waivers granted herein will be in effect until future development of the property, at which time the waivers will be automatically revoked. Um, you know, the special use is gonna expire in two years and so that won't be a permitted use there at that time. But just so there is consistency between these two ordinances, I would suggest amending section two that says that the waivers granted herein will be in effect until the...
Two years from date of this.
For a period of two years.
That's my amendment.
About a second on that amendment?
Second.
On the motion.
Motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
You do need to convene a public hearing on this one as well.
Absolutely. Public hearing, anybody here to speak on these waivers on the same piece of property at Sixth Street and Olive? Seeing none, closed public hearing on the motion. Do we have a motion as amended?
You have a motion to adopt as amended.
Alright.
Or no, you don't, you had the previous motion to adopt. You need a new motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as amended. Second.
Okay, now, I have a question. But, the piece, previous legislation, they are required to have the wheel stops, there's no parking, this does not waive any of that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'm gonna make sure that this doesn't void some of the...
Sean's waving, nodding his head, okay.
We're good, Sean, okay.
On the motion.
Motion to adopt as amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And I need to remind them, they need to come in and get a business license and they need to tell us how long they've been parking cars because we will go back through years.
You got that, guys? Okay, see Ms. Whitby? Okay.
01898 Councilmember Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning certain unused easements on property located at 12209 Highway 70 in the City of North Little Rock first reading.
Move to suspend all readings. Second.
A motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
How about a motion to adopt?
The move.
Second.
Questions, comments, on the motion.
Uh, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Before we do the emergency, this one has convene a public hearing on it as well.
Absolutely. Call a public hearing, anybody here to speak on the, uh, vacating and abandoning unused easements at 12209 Highway 70? Seeing none, closed public hearing on the motion.
Okay, so now on the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01899 Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of section 14.115 of the zoning ordinance to allow an electronic changeable copy sign on property located at 3205 Valentine Road in the City of North Little Rock first reading.
Move to suspend the reading.
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna do this in the right order this time. I'll call public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the, on the granting a waiver for the zoning ordinance to allow electronic changeable copies for 3205 Valentine Road? Yes, we have a comment.
We're looking to update a outdated sign with the LD, LED, not only for a better-looking sign for that property, it's the only one left on that area of our business that uses these old outdated signs that we have to use poles to change the numbers with. We're really looking for the help of the council to get this passed. It's been a long time. Thank you.
I have, wait, I have a question.
Question?
Yeah, just, just to be correct, 'cause I'm looking at the pictures here. So, the only part that's actually the electronic copy is the price.
Just the price.
Just the price.
We're not looking at beautifying anything with special, "Come here, shop here," it's just the price of the fuel.
Which is required by law.
On the motion? To suspend all readings?
To suspend the readings, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
The move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency clause, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much. Uh, public comments, I've got two. First one is Brent Treese.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Brent Treese, this is Gabe Probus. We're both elected officers of the International Association of Firefighters, Local 35 here in North Little Rock. And I, I wanna start off by saying, the absolute last thing that we wanted to do is come here and have to have this conversation. We made that very clear throughout the negotiating process over the last couple of years. But we are here to address the handbook that was pushed through this last meeting during our absence. We wanna provide something for you tonight that you, you didn't have the opportunity to, to have last meeting and that's the facts. April 2nd, 2018, we were told that the city could not move forward in our negotiating process with our contract before addressing two topics. One was prevailing rights and the other was insurance. If you move on to September, we had a meeting with the city that included our negotiating team, the mayor, Chief Bradley, Chief Tucker, and Mrs. Scott. During the meeting, we came to an agreement on both issues. Let, let me remind you that this was three months ago that we came to an agreement on both issues. The two issues that we've been told over and over are the, are the holdup. Since then, that, that's all that, that I've heard here at the, the council meetings is how those are the two issues that are the holdups and we conceded to those months ago. Last council meeting, this handbook was passed despite our concessions. The very next week, we received the draft that the mayor and Chief Bradley had proposed. The, the, the week after this handbook was passed, we received the draft via email. Not only were the two articles that are in question changed, but so were the majority of the remaining 37 articles in our contract. All of those, almost all of those, had changes in them despite the fact that the mayor told you two weeks ago that there were only two hangups. If the city had put half the effort into our contract as the total effort that, that they applied to the handbook, this draft would have been passed months ago. You were told by the mayor two weeks ago that we were great salesmen and difficult to deal with, but I'll let you be the judge of that. I would like to, to close by offering the opportunity for any of you to review our facts versus the fabricated information that you heard last meeting. I look forward to hearing from some of you so that we can present you with those facts. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next public comment is, uh, Dr. Henry Ard.
Mr. Baxter, you need to leave now. Murray Witcher, come on down.
I'm here.
Come on down.
He wants to get a picture, Murray.
If each one of y'all, including the mayor, were looking at your center desk, you have a medicine bottle with a prescription in it. And Debbie, do you mind reading what's on yours? 'Cause on all three of them. How you do, Murray?
It says, "Remove one after the meeting."
Y'all, in, in James's defense, I've known him for probably 55 or 56 years, so...
Actually, it's been longer than that.
Yeah, it probably has.
Okay. Y'all have something to do, so you can kindly forget him. He's not gonna be here to give y'all trouble. He knows that much. First, we wanna thank Becky Witcher. She's watching, by the way, I hope. Uh, have a medicine bottle for her. That's because she always had to get your suits ready, tell you what to do, make sure you got here on time, behind every successful man. Isn't there a woman? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's for Becky. This right here, would you read what is prescribed for you to do, please?
Remove one at 4:00 PM or the second and fourth Monday of each month. Remove one. James, are you bribing me?
Yeah. I can't see behind me, is his, uh, new person taking his place behind me?
Yes, yes, he is.
Your turn, come on. Come on.
Don't forget your three minutes, Jimmy.
Have I run over yet?
Yes, you have.
No, I haven't. You're gonna have a hard place to follow him and keep stuff going, so you need to take that too to get you to move. We wish you luck and we'll be waiting to see what office you run for next. Have a good day, everybody, and a happy new year.
Thank you very much, Jimmy. We do appreciate it and I think everybody knows that, uh, tonight is Murray's, uh, last city council meeting after 28 years. And Murray, if you'd like to say a few words?
You bet. Jane, will you come back? I, I guess, you know, the, the period of, of public service that, that involve my family. And I guess, uh, one of them, Andy, will you stand up? My son from Fort Lauderdale is here tonight as, as, as my shepherd, uh, protecting me. Uh, you know, I'm pleased to have Andy, Andy in from Fort Lauderdale for the Christmas holidays. He began when, I guess he was, well, he's 42 now, so he was, he was pretty young, 36 years ago when I ran for school board. And he was putting up signs then and then his brother followed in succession. I have always believed that public service is an honorable endeavor. Uh, I have always believed that you should contribute and give back to your city. I am glad to know that Ms. Ginn, uh, is going to be sitting in the seat, uh, next to Mr. I am glad to know that Ms. Ginn is going to be sitting in the seat next to Mr. Height and I feel certain that she's going to take that charge to heart. As a matter of fact, I know she will. Jane and I visited for a few minutes tonight and she's ready to go to work. And I hope that y'all welcome her into the fold as you have me, that you take care of her as you have me. You've been a great family, I appreciate everything that we have done together, all the work that we've put forth, the thought that we've put forth. I know each of us have our strengths and our weaknesses and we have seemed to do real well based on that working as a group. I have seen over 28 years, a lot of city councils across the United States working together. And I've said this before, you know, we have, in my opinion, one of the best groups of folks. Every one of you are dedicated to the city, you have the city at heart and you work diligently to serve the folks that we're supposed to be serving. And I appreciate that so much. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
What a wonderful civil servant, Murray. You and your family have given back this community tenfold on what you've taken out of it, no doubt. And we certainly do appreciate you and all your service and of course Becky and Andy and Alan too for all their work too. So, Mr. Height, you have comments?
I just, just a quick comment. I can't remember when I didn't know Murray Witcher. Murray and I have grown up here in North Little Rock, lived in the same neighborhoods a couple of times and I just want to tell Murray that it's been an honor and a pleasure to sit next to you and to work with you for the last 18 years in my case. And I always, I always owe you a ton of thanks for all that you've done to make me a better alderman than I was the first day I sat down at this desk. And you and I have worked great together. I can't remember more than one or two arguments that we might have had or differed on during my 18 years, but I think you and I have worked for Ward 4 and for the city of North Little Rock and I just, I just, like I said, it's just, it's been a real pleasure and an honor to work with you as my seatmate in Ward 4. And, you know, this isn't goodbye, this isn't goodbye because you and I, our paths cross on a regular basis, but Murray, I just thank you for all you've done for me and this council and for this city. And I know you've said this council is great and we've had a lot of great members. We've had some characters on this council in the last 18 years that I've served here, but, amen. Thank you. But anyway, again, thank you, Murray, for all you've done for me. And I look forward to working with Jane out there and I'll be at your swearing in next Tuesday and look forward to working with you. You've got some big shoes to fill, okay? Big shoes to fill, anyway, thank you, Murray.
Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Taylor?
Well, I can remember a time when I didn't know Murray Witcher. But, you know, shortly after I joined the council, Murray kind of took me on his wing and introduced me to the municipal league and the League of Cities and just kind of showed me the ropes and gave me a lot of guidance and wisdom on a lot of things that I just didn't have a clue about. And Murray, I could call him and he would give me information and just kind of give me little tidbits and not tidbits as to what to do or how to do it, but just subtle little hints on the best way to kind of think about things and kind of think it through and go at it with more wisdom. And I can tell you, my friend, I appreciate that, it has helped me out immensely. And you'll be missed. You've been a great leader and a great friend and a heck of a guy to sit around a bar with from time to time. So, we'll, hopefully we'll see you down the road, my friend.
Mr. White?
I'm gonna just make this quick, many ways to thank you, Murray, but one particular one was, in my first year, we were at the National League of Cities meeting in Boston and following that, there was some, kind of, it was an introduction to childhood obesity issues that we were dealing with. I remember you handed it to me and you said, you said to me, here, I think you need to do this. And it really opened up the door, we got the grant following that and made a lot of changes in the city and just kind of set a foundation of good health for our city and I really thank you for that.
Thank you. I know we all feel that way, Ms. Ross?
I just wanted to say one thing. I've always threatened to get a pea shooter and shoot it across the room at Murray because he makes faces at me all through the meeting and rolls his eyes at me. I just wish that I had taken the opportunity to do that, Murray. But truly, Murray, I've always called him my sage because he does, he has such a wealth of knowledge.